Councilman Bodier?
Present.
Councilman Chatelain?
Present.
Councilman Hewitt?
Present.
Councilman Landry?
Present.
Councilman Murray?
Present.
Mayor Mosca?
Present.
Police Chief Walker?
Here.
Fire Chief St. Seer. City Attorney Corcel?
Present.
We have Ms. Kelly here from Blue Flash. Let you come up and give your special presentation.
How y'all doing? I'm Kelly with Blue Flash. We are working in the city of Harahan doing the sewer evaluation system. We started off with 136,000 feet roughly. To date, we have cleaned and filmed a little over 25,000 feet. Guys are out there steadily working, cleaning and filming the sewer lines, inspecting manholes, and smoke testing the lines.
Is that the smoke people are talking about? Is that smoke coming out the drains? Is that you guys?
Yes, that's us. That's us. They should get notices 48 hours before we start in an area. Call them on their door, letting them know we'll be in the area. It's not uncommon to see smoke coming out of vents on roofs, manholes, catch basins, cracks in the street or sidewalks.
And the first 25,000 feet, was it promising or?
We did find some areas that are going to need repairs. The engineers are reviewing that and making the recommendations for repairs. And then that will be turned over to y'all and put out for bid.
Kelly, where are y'all right now?
All over Harahan. We started in Station 8. We're finishing up in Station 8, but they bounce in between 8 and 3.
We're doing some minor cutting as they go through this smoke testing.
If they do run into grease or roots that would impede the camera from going through the line, they're cutting those out.
Perfect.
And removing them.
Thank you very much.
May I ask, how much more do you have left to do? How many more feet?
About 110,000. We have about 136,000 total.
Total, okay. Thank you.
Come back again. Next, let's go to Mr. Talbert. So you want to say anything? Representative Kurt Talbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council. It's been a while since I've been here. We just got out of session a few weeks ago. I just wanted to give just kind of a brief update on some things. And if y'all had any questions, you know, I'd be glad to answer.
Now, that haircut, they gave you that in Baton Rouge.
I haven't had time for a haircut.
He's been working. He's been working.
That's the first thing on my list. But I guess, just to touch on a few things. You know, we were disappointed. A lot of things did not pass. I don't think any bad legislation passed. But to give you an example, you know, TOPPS. We tried to rein in TOPPS a little bit. You know, TOPPS is getting very expensive, the popular TOPPS scholarship. It started out in its inception, I think, at 20, $30 million a year. Now, we're going to be approaching about 300 million. We've tried to file some legislation that I co-authored to either make it alone the first couple of years, or kind of up the standards, or just try to kind of get it in line with what other states do. Because, you know, TOPPS is kind of running out of control. But unfortunately, those efforts failed. So it's something that we need to keep. I think it's very important for all of our children and grandchildren. But I think it's something that financially, we need to get a handle on it or we risk really bankrupting the whole thing. Another thing we dealt with, obviously, was the Ceflo levy board lawsuit dealing with the coast. And that's a bill that did pass, that basically, we killed that lawsuit. Now, the Jefferson Paris lawsuit is still intact. So that lawsuit is still going on. But many of us felt that the Ceflo levy board lawsuit was something that was kind of conceived behind closed doors. It was, I believe, a 20 to 30 percent contingency fee on a multi-billion dollar lawsuit. You can kind of do the math there. And, you know, all the money would go to the board. It wasn't going to the state. We didn't know how they would spend it. We wanted to make sure that that money is well spent. So that's another thing. And, you know, Common Core, I know, is a huge, huge subject and very critical and very, you know, very controversial. But largely, it stayed intact. We did pass some data protection bill, a data protection bill that would protect the students' data, you know, anything that would identify them, any kind of social security numbers or anything like that. So I think that was a good thing. You'll see some legislation next year to tweak it even further. But basically, you know, those were some of the highlights we had. It was an 85-day session. Next year will be a 60-day fiscal session where we'll deal with taxes and tax credits and whatnot. But I would be glad to answer any questions, if any members of the council, the mayor, have any for me.
I have one, Mayor.
Sure.
The TOPPS program. Now, did they lower the qualifications for TOPPS?
Nothing's changed in TOPPS. Nothing, nothing has changed.
How much is that taxpayer dollar? And I know some of it's privately funded, too?
TOPPS is not privately funded at all.
When it started, wasn't there a family that?
The Patrick Taylor Foundation started TOPPS. And I believe they put some money upfront. But the Taylor family does not put up any money. It's all taxpayer money. And that's the problem is, you know, it started out costing the, you know, the state about 20, $25 million. We'll be over 300 next year. We'll be pushing 400 in the next couple of years. And it's financially an unattainable program. You know, it's just, it's something that we need to rein in and we need to kind of get a hold of. But it's financially unsustainable, unfortunately.
Yes. Now, the Common Core, what I heard on the news is, this was something that's proposed years ago, seven, eight years ago.
2010.
With a promise of a lot of money that we took if we implement this thing years later. Is that how it?
No, not exactly. There was, you know, there's a lot of confusion and a lot of misconceptions about Common Core. And, you know, there was no federal money that said, "If you have to, if you have to implement Common Core, and we'll give you this money." There's no federal ties that say, "If we, if we get out of Common Core tomorrow, we don't have to pay the government back," or anything like that.
Because that's what the news, they were kind of spinning that at first.
There's a lot, there's a lot of misinformation.
That you went to someone out reading it.
There's a lot of information, misinformation out there dealing with Common Core, still. But there is, you know, there is no federal mandate. There is no federal agencies telling us we have to implement Common Core and that if we don't, we have to pay back any money or anything like that. But it's certainly something that needs to be debated, needs to be vetted. And I don't think it will go away anytime soon, the controversy on Common Core.
Thank you.
So.
How is TOPPS funded? Is it funded like through lottery or, I mean, how is it funded? Where are they giving money?
I believe most of the money just comes through a general fund. So, and that's, that's the problem. That, you know, there is no dedicated funding source like a tax or a levy on anything. So, you know, it hits the general fund, which takes money away from health and hospitals, takes money away from paving our streets, takes money away from a lot of things. So it's something that, that needs to be addressed. Unfortunately, all the bills that have been filed to address it just have not, have not made it through the system. But I believe we'll file bills again next year because it's something that we need to keep. It's something that's very important and send a lot of kids to college that otherwise would either not go to college or not go to college in Louisiana. So, we're working on it, though. We're working on it. So, if there are any more questions, I'll be glad to answer them. If not, Mr. Mayor, appreciate your time and counsel. Thank you.
Please come back.
I will.
Councilman Johnson, you want to say anything? Mr. Capella, I know he's got to go to Canada, so why don't you?
No, I made, I made the Canada run. I'm back.
Good evening, members. I first need to apologize. There was some confusion about last month's meeting. I understand that there were some questions that, had I been here, I probably could have addressed. And I do apologize for that. But I'm here today to kind of give you an update and just let you know that we are, we're continuing that march to try to get this project up, running. And I have spent most of my time recently on the continued pursuit of trying to find a mechanism to fund the park. As you all remember, you know, our commitment is to work diligently to try to find some way to keep the whole space green. Not just the back, the front, but the whole space. And that's been the, it's been more of a challenge than I thought it was going to be. Each place I go seems to send me to a different spot, which is not unusual in government. But we have, we've absolutely have had 25 separate meetings, 25 separate entities, which would include politics, which would include private donations, which include foundations, most of the elected officials. And it's been, it's been enlightening to hear that everybody appreciates the idea of making it a park and keeping it green. But when you ask for the money, they then become, as my father would say, they have fish hooks in their pockets and they don't want to reach down in there and get them. I'm, I am disappointed, but not completely finished yet. I think that there are some mechanisms. And I do have to point out that in my travels to all these various elected officials, apparently, Councilman Johnson has already been down this road. I get a lot of discussion about what he has been and what he has talked about. And, and he has been very helpful to me to say, "Hey, look, this is where, this is where I went." I'd like to be able to announce today that we have a donor or a foundation or somebody that is willing to step in. We do not. I'm still working very hard. Your mayor has been helpful. The councilman's been helpful. But we do not have a, an announcement on the park yet. We hope to have, you know, some luck. There's been some discussion about putting some capital outlay bill money out. But that's a process that would be two or three years in the making. So we're going to continue to work. If anybody, any of you elected officials or any member of this audience or anybody out there in Harahan has anybody that they think that would need, that I could visit with and talk about this, I'd be more than happy to go see them anytime. Anybody have any questions on my visits on the park?
I do.
Yes, sir.
On your calculations, when do you think the year starts? From when you can, by the time when we vote on the agreement or when the agreement was issued? Well, we had some conversations about that last meeting.
Yeah, there was.
In your mind, where do you think the year starts?
In the agreement that we, we signed off and presented to you all back in October, when the vote was coming up, was that the year would commence from the date of the signing of the ordinance. Mr. Georges and Mr. DeCody have made it clear that if you all think that more time will be successful, we'll be willing to, you know, to work with that. You know, obviously, timeframes shift when you're trying to do this bigger project. We're under the clock now. It didn't matter. I started working on the park before October and I'll continue to work on the park after October. We, we have not finished our development agreement, the specific document. But in our proposal to you all, we, the document said that it would begin upon the passing of the ordinance to make the area commercial. It was one of the conditions, as a matter of fact, to get the commercial zoning changed. So since that moment, I've been working on and, you know, continue to work on it. So there's been some discussion. And I understand at the last meeting, there were some questions about when that began. Again, we're flexible to what the needs of Harahan. As I told you at the last meeting, we're your neighbors. And neighbors help neighbors and they work with neighbors and they try to figure things out. And so if there's something that, you know, we don't think it's going to run out.
That was my main question, in a spirit of trying to keep it green like everybody wants.
Absolutely.
If we've got a deal close to being made and all of a sudden, the year date comes up, you guys aren't going to slam the door and say, "No, the deal is here."
Oh, no, indeed. Absolutely. I'll give you my commitment now. That date will remain open for as long as you guys think that we can continue to be successful in finding a funding source. But I have to tell you, I've been doing this for a long time. It is a very difficult sell to, unless we get the right person at the right time in the right frame of mind. But nobody is going to stop. Nobody's going to, you know, throw in a towel. We're working hard to find it. And certainly, if, if the council thinks that some more time would be warranted, we would certainly work with you on that.
I know we had looked at it a long time ago with the mitigation factors, with the oil leases and stuff like that. And I was hearing on the radio the other night that somebody, maybe way down in the, in the bayous somewhere, they were taking a chunk of this man's land to mitigate building the levees. Now, I was, felt like yelling at the radio saying, "We've got a big chunk of land you guys can take if you're just looking to mitigate an oil lease." And, I mean, I mean, if y'all look to these people.
Yes. I was actually referred from Senator Landry's office to the Office of Parks and Recreation and then to the land managers. And one of, because my idea was, since it's connected to the Mississippi River, we have that ability to tie it to some federal program. And so they, I was director to that land management and discussions. Again, it's placement on the river. Actually, that turn right there is a bit of an obstacle, a little bit. There's some issues. But Senator Landry's office was helpful. But again, they sent me to a federal agency, who sent me to a federal agency, who sent me to a federal agency. And, and, yeah, we've all been down that road before, especially you all in local government. It's, it's very difficult. You've just got to keep knocking on the door till you find that person that says, "Hey, what have you thought of this?" There is no connectivity right now. I tried to talk, envision to the feds about, you know, taking over the property as part of a, you know, a land bank and holding it for the land for public trust. I mean, I, we're, we're not dead. We're throwing a lot of ideas on it. And it's, again, we're going to, we're going to continue to do it until we can find something that works. And I think that everyone has enjoyed the fact that it has remained green, it has remained cut, it's accessible to everybody, just as we committed to. And, you know, we would like to try to make that work if we can.
As far as the development itself, what kind of timeframe in your idea where you think it would start?
Well, we've made a lot of progress.
Another year from now, year and a half from now?
No. The way these things go is, there's a lot of work that has to be done before any announcement. And then once the announcement goes, they're ready to begin, you know, a week later or stuff. The development itself has, has continued to inch along when you're dealing with national retailers and people that are doing this. They constantly throw curveballs and, you know, this guy doesn't want to work with this guy. And so we think that we're, we're well within the timeframe. It may be that we need more time, just as we're going to do with the park. But that's a function of when we're presenting, when we're, when we have those signed documents, which we hope to have very soon. And we bring to you all our, our first, you know, the requirements under your ordinance is to start that program. You know, we're not going to let the clock get in the way. We're going to make it happen.
It looks like SAVES is getting ready to break ground on their shopping center. Did we lose anybody to them?
No. No. As a matter of fact, we took somebody from them. They realized that that job, this was a, was a better location and that, in the context of what they were looking for. And again, we think it is.
That's it for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Yes, Councilman Murray?
May I ask, is Sterling Properties still involved?
Yes.
They are?
Yes.
There was some question as to that last time.
Well, when you deal with a developer, you, you, it's, it's a marriage. You, you take the good, the bad, and you have to deal with both sides of that situation. They have been a great partner and they continue to try to develop and try to work with us. But our agreement with Sterling always was, was that they were going to bring certain tenants to us. And as we all know, we, we thought we were going to be able to get a Whole Foods and it, you know, it didn't happen. So at the, there are some people who might not want to work through Sterling. And if we reach that, we would have to make some arrangements around it. So he's still, while they are still our, our date at the dance, you know, they made it clear that they may not be able to leave the dance with us.
Okay. Question. There has always been some speculation as to whether there was actually a letter of intent for different buildings there. Is, has there any, has there been, through, I guess, Sterling Properties, who would be the developer? Are there any actual in-hand letters of intent from retail slash restaurants slash whatever else you were looking for?
I can't answer for Sterling because, I can only tell you what I heard, which is, of course, hearsay. But they have lettered, they had two letters of intent that I am aware of. There may have been some other letters for other retailers. The way they were working it was, it's a domino effect. You can't put certain people in certain shopping centers. You're restricted as to what we really want in the shopping center to set it, to set the standard. It's not, we don't want, you know, laundromats and that kind of stuff. And no disrespect to laundromat people, but it just, we're not, that's not the type of shopping center it is. So I don't have a definitive answer for you to the number of that. I will get it and have it for you at the next meeting.
Okay. And, and one more question. I'm going to go out on a limb and say, you do have a letter intent from Sterling Properties that they are the only developer that you're looking at at this time? Or, you know, that Sterling Properties is, is the person who's going to buy this property from you?
We have an agreement with Sterling Property. We don't have a letter intent. Letter intent doesn't work. That's not how it develops.
Well, whatever, whatever the.
The document. We have an agreement.
The document is called.
We have an agreement with them. And we have, and as Mr. Georges and Mr. DeCody do, we have, you know, more important than any kind of written agreement, they have their word that they are going to work for us to get this thing developed. At any time, if they come in and say, "We can't do this," we don't want somebody who's not going to spend 100% of their time and commit to what we need to make this work. If they come back and say, "We can't get this tenant," for whatever reason, you know, in the history of development, people might not want to be with certain developers.
Sure.
That's how it works. And we would work around that. We're not going to let any relationship, while we value them and we appreciate their, their hard work, we're not in a position to say that they are the exclusive developer of this property. And if somebody brought, if somebody had something that wanted to, that thought they would like to do something but want to deal directly, then that's what we would do.
So the possibility could remain that Sterling could be in whole for the development or in partial for the development of that piece of property?
It's our hope that they would be the whole. But it could be that they would be in part.
And with, and with that, would they be the whole? This is a thought. Would they be the whole of the owner of the 15 acres? Because if I'm not mistaken, you guys are the, want to sell that piece of property, correct, to a developer or developers?
It is our, it was our design, our intent, that the developer would purchase the property from us and develop the property as commercial property. That is our, that is our design.
Is, and remains such?
Absolutely. But if something changes in that regard, which not hasn't to this date, we would certainly have to look at if some other entity wanted to come in and look at this project or say, "I can bring something in." We would certainly not turn them away.
If there's someone better to the table.
Well, I mean, not better, just, it's different. Certain, certain companies deal with certain, you know, have certain relationships with various stores. They're, they're, you know, we ran into this with some of the high-priced grocery store people. They only go to certain people and you have to go through them. It's, it's a fact of business. But we're not going to let that interfere with what we want to accomplish. The idea, the concept was that a developer would buy the acreage in the front and develop it as commercial through our assistance and through the council to make sure that it fits what Harahan wants on that property.
Thank you. On another note, I do want to thank you very much. You have given your word that the grass would be cut and it has continued and has maintained being cut. I appreciate that very much. So for the agreements you have with your grass cutters and all, they have done, as far as I can see, a very good job of handling that. Every couple of weeks, they were doing it.
And if something comes up, I mean, that we, we were alerted that there may have been some problems with the, one of the drainage ditches or something, that the dervis had built up or something like that, we are your neighbors.
Right.
We are, we are, all it takes is a phone call to me or to Mr. Georges or Mr. DeCody, and those issues, we can resolve.
Right. So in, in, I'm giving you kudos. But on the other hand, I'm going to ask a favor. The front of the property that, that faces Jefferson Highway, there are lots of trees that are kind of hanging down into the ditch. The, I just called and asked State Representative Talbert's office, Ms. Tia, if she could see about getting, I don't know if it's DOT or whoever that comes out, because that is a state highway in a state ditch that needs to be done. As I was passing this evening coming, there's lots of lilies are in it now. And with the advent of rains and heavy rains coming during the summertime, that deters the already issues that we have with flooding. So my question is, if there is a possibility that we could do a little bit of manicuring the front of that piece of property, some. There was a tree that had fallen over, various issues. If we could do a little manicuring, that would really be nice. I don't.
Ms. Murray, I want you to watch me. See, that is? We have the finest state representative in the entire legislation, okay?
Representative Talbert has done that before. You've done that ditch boss before.
Do you need, wait, I think we've got some napkins. Get somebody to get them.
We have the finest representative in the entire, 144 of them upstairs. And anything that, that he would, would need. But you, you certainly can call me or you can call, and I will, will be happy to look at that. We may not be able to do certain things if it's in the drainage ditch.
No, no. The ditch is his problem. We are very well, there is clear.
But if it is a tree situation or, you know, bushes or high grass. We'll, we'll certainly look at that and see what we can do.
On your sides, which would actually be south of the ditch itself, just some manicuring of some of the trees and so forth. Okay, I saw that.
Park money?
Park money. You see, that's one, that's one of your park money.
Park money.
No, he was very, Mr. Representative Talbert gave me some good ideas and, and talked about possibilities on the park. But again, we face a very difficult time with the state. They, they, they literally have no money to, to try to do. And when you go to those who are responsible for that, it becomes a very difficult thing. But he was super and, and, and gave me some great insight to how I could proceed with some of his colleagues and some of the other, you know, the Lieutenant Governor's office runs all the museums and, and that stuff. So they, we were going to try to work through Mr. Darden's office and get some, some help, so.
Well, as soon as I get a clear-cut picture of that bald eagle that's flying over the top of it, we'll have lots of federal money.
That's right. It'll be a national preserve.
You, you got it. And a New York second.
And that's what they got to do now.
I'm looking for him. I've seen him.
Please get that picture and send it to us.
I've seen him.
Send it to us.
Don't you worry. Or I could get the spotted white owl or the, the apple slug or something like that, whichever one of those were.
The tadpole, whatever.
Yeah.
Jack, as, you know, as we get out and we talk to people out in the neighborhoods and they ask us, "Wow, what's going on with Colonial? Why is nothing going on there? What's going on?" We'll try to tell them what's awesome, that nothing's going on there because you get to keep your green space for a little bit longer.
That's right.
Would it be fair, and, you know, to tell them that, look, this is just an evolving, it's an ever-evolving until we're ready to get these things on and this development, the purchase agreement?
Councilman, I absolutely believe that. And, and you can also tell them that, you know, one of the things that we talked about very early was that this wasn't something that was, and I think Councilman Chatelain was, you know, or maybe it was Councilman Hewitt, that was, you know, harping on a start date. We understand that everybody would like to know when the dirt will be shoveled and that stuff. But we're going to continue to keep the bar. And even if we were, were able to get the front part, the back part still remains green and still remains accessible to them and is still going to be there as a, as a, as it's always been. And that will probably take, on the residential side, if we ever get to that situation, at least a couple of years. So there's still, there's still plenty of time. We will keep everybody informed and we will hope to make.
Take all the time you want.
There are some that would like.
On a business, on a business standpoint, though, I mean, a big development like that, you're not going to stop breaking ground till you have most of your leases wrapped up, right?
And that, the, the commercial side's rapidly approaching that. And then the, then the discussion, you know, we want to have a frank discussion about the park situation. Because like Ms. Murray said, you know, a spotted tadpole in a hole could end up requiring a whole different animal, you know, the whole different situation. We're not against trying to, to, to figure out how to make the things work. Obviously, you know, I can't say it enough. I can't reiterate enough. We're your neighbors. We, we hear you. We know what, what we need to do to try to help. And we're going to do it.
Councilman Hewitt?
I just wanted to thank you for coming tonight. We had requested the last meeting, and I know there might be a mix-up. But you've always had the open line of communication. And anytime I've called or the rest of the council, you've been very quick to return our call and to sit down and talk to us. So I appreciate you being the point of contact for the owners of the property. And I think you've done a great job keeping us abreast of the changes and the progress of the property and the development. And I just want to appreciate, I appreciate that. I want to thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that, too.
And she's not doing this?
No, no. Thank you very much.
And that's about what I was going to say. But she said it a lot more eloquently than I could. So we do appreciate you coming.
Thank you. Is there anyone here from Coretta's Grill?
Hi, I'm going to be opening.
Before we ask anybody else to address the council, I'm sure everyone has noticed our new sound system. Call it what you want. I'd call it the Honorable Barbara Butera Sound System, former mayor of the city of Harahan. Anyone else wish to address the council?
She said the squeaky wheel gets the grease. It finally happened.
That's right. That's right.
Can you hear us?
Ms. Barbara, come and say something with the new microphone.
I wanted to get up and say thank you because we can hear you in the back. And I feel like I did this because I complained to the mayor last month.
That's right.
Mayor, who do we have to thank?
Keep on complaining.
Who do we have to thank for the microphone? Someone worked on a grant?
Yeah, Grant. Let me think about this.
There are new speakers right here and here.
Oh, those have been there.
I don't even notice that.
No.
No, those have been there.
No.
Tied into the same speakers.
Nothing new out there, just.
It's not that much of a grant.
Surround sound.
Where's the wolf, where's the sub wolf word every day?
The other thing I can tell you is, we have a control which stops that microphone from working.
And who's in control of that?
The mayor.
He's got a Cindy button, too.
All right, anyone else wish to address the council? Let's go to council minutes.
Chief.
I'm sorry, chief, come on in. Chief, you want your report now or later?
I know I did.
Mayor, you turned off his mic.
Yeah, I turned it off.
Go ahead.
I'd like to, and I don't think I have to remind you, we're already in the first month of hurricane season. If you people are not getting prepared, don't let this slow predicted season catch you off guard. A few years back, we had one of them, and I think it was Isaac, really busted up the west side of Louisiana. Things you need to do, make up your mind if you're going to stay or go. If you're going to leave, leave early. If you get caught in a contraflow, two-hour trip could wind up eight hours or better of you riding on the road. If you're going to stay, make sure you got all the preparations you need. Prepare your home, excuse me, clean your garden, your yard, have all that stuff. Then you're going to need seven days of non-perishable foods, a gallon of water per person per day. Don't forget your pet, they're going to need food and water. Medical supplies, anything from a Band-Aid to a compression bandage. You never know what kind of problem you'll run into. Don't forget a can opener. You're going to need to secure everything. Keep your gas, keep your tank full of gas if that storm gets in the Gulf and heads our way. If you're going to use a generator, make sure you have one of a good size that can handle it, because we've had people try to run four- and five-ton air conditions on a 35 KW generator. It don't work, as the man can tell you that. Everything you're going to need, make sure you get it. Anything you have, non-perishable foods won't go to waste, your gas won't go to waste. You'll burn it up one way or the other. Have hammers, nails, saws, anything that you can make a minor repair to your house. You never know when a two-by-four might come flying through, a tree limb might come flying through. Holes in the roof, something could fall on your roof. You've got these inexpensive blue, like a Topolion, got a hole in the roof, it's leaking through, drag all your furniture into a pile, cover, all that up with that. The name of the game is be prepared. Fire department and the city's been prepared for years. We have a new chief, which we will be getting with him and getting stuff straight for him. The fire department, police department, the city will be prepared. It's up to you to take care of yourself, too. 55 mile an hour winds, fire department doesn't respond. So, you're going to be on your own unless somebody can get to you there in a POV. So, that's what we just want to remind you, to get yourself prepared now and don't wait till the last minute. That's all I got right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the council? Madam Clerk, let's go with minutes.
Reading of the minutes of the council meeting on May 15.
Motion by Bodie, second by Murray, to dispense with the reading of the minutes, all in favor.
Yeah, yeah.
Any opposed, five yeas, no nays. Motion by Hewitt, second by Landry, to approve the minutes, all in favor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Five yeas, no nays. Communications?
The Board of Appeals and Adjustments did not meet in May and the Planning and Joining Board did not meet in June.
All right, resolutions, do we have any?
No, sir.
Next, Madam Clerk, ordinances for approval of public hearing.
All right, ordinance number one. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Bodie and seconded by Councilman Hewitt. An ordinance adopting the annual budget of revenue and expenditures for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2014, for the city of Harahan, Louisiana. Now therefore be it ordained by the mayor and the council of the city of Harahan, state of Louisiana, acting as the governing authority of said city. At section one, the below estimate of revenue and expenditures as reflected in summary herein be and the same as hereby adopted to serve as the budget of revenue and expenditures for the city of Harahan for the fiscal year January 1 through December 31, 2014. The adoption of this budget amendment shall form the framework in monitoring revenue and control expenditures as required by LRS 391310. And, uh, let's see, the total revenue and transfer in, $5,489,825. In total expenditures, $5,489, $89,825. The severability and repeal clause is referenced in ordinance number 1566 is incorporated into this ordinance. This ordinance having been submitted to a vote, the vote thereon was as follows.
All right, motion by Bodie, open up for public hearing, all in favor.
Yeah.
Any opposed, five yeas, no nays. Anyone wishing to address the council on this budget is welcome to do so. Motion by Bodie, second by Hewitt, to close the public hearing, all in favor.
Yeah.
Any opposed, five yeas, no nays. Discussion, Chief, you want to say anything?
We're a little less than was allocated last year and we're going to work within our budget as much as possible. I don't plan on laying off any of our officers, keep the streets of Harahan safe and try and work within it as much as possible.
I'm sure everyone wants to work with you on that and, you know, we can amend the budget hopefully in August or September. You had to just come up with, what, how you want to amend your budget.
We'll keep you abreast of what's going on. Thank you.
Councilman Hewitt?
No discussion.
Councilman Murray?
Yes, please. Mayor, I noticed in here that this year that we did not have anything, if I'm not mistaken, anything in here trying, saying that we were waiting on some FEMA money. Is that correct? And that I believe is correct.
Uh, there's nothing in here. We got a letter, interestingly enough, dated June 17, 2014, in which we're appealing 200, about $200,000.
Okay, that they have said, no, that they weren't going to pay and that's what we're doing.
Right, we are appealing.
And that is from?
Isaac?
Isaac or Isaac?
Yeah.
Okay. And that, it's, it's not, obviously, it's not something we can count on. Another thing I wanted to ask, too, the, the court.
Excuse me, that 200,000 is not included in this budget?
No.
No, it's not.
I didn't think so.
No. It can't be.
I understand, I just.
Yeah, right. The other thing, too, I wanted to ask, Mayor, court fines, how was that compared to last year? Because court fines were very low last year.
Right, we budgeted less money this year with court fines, but they're still off. There were some months within the transition of chief of police that unfortunately, we weren't writing a lot of tickets.
Okay, all right.
But we're back up again.
We are back up again, okay. The other thing that I wanted to ask, too, is, I haven't seen a run from 2013, the end of 2013. Has everything been finished and compiled yet?
I don't think so. So, some FEMA money out? We just got that check in.
I know, but I guess my question is, I haven't seen final figures from 2013 yet.
No, I know they, I'm sorry.
Did we, did our, our company who comes in, our auditors come in?
Yes, they completed their audit last week.
They did complete it last week.
And they were here for three weeks straight.
Has all of our GLs and all of our corrections that needed to be made from the, from our auditor, our company, Posta Waitinettle, have, have they come in or have had our CPA, our third-party administrator CPA, come in and fixed our books so that they are correct, so that you can hand me a proper or total complete 2013 end-of-the-year budget?
I believe so, but Nicole, why don't we tell Albert to compile that if he has it and get it copied off the council?
Yes, sir.
And while we're on budget.
I believe he did it, though.
Okay, because I'd like to see what the end of the year actually was, not what we got six months ago.
Right.
Okay, I'd like to see what it actually is since then. The other thing I'd like to see, too, and I did get just a small bit, I haven't had in a couple of months what our outstanding capital funds are, what remains in, for each capital fund that we have allocated money to, what's been used, what's left, and what our balances is in capital funding. Do you know kind of offhand what it is right now that we have?
I want to say this, but I don't want to, anyone, I want to say this, but I don't want this to be taken the wrong way. Probably around 400,000.
Yeah, but we've got some stuff in.
But some of that money has got, we got to do an ordinance because some of that money, you know, we've spent on streets.
Yeah, that's why, well, right, because we have to get that done. And I know some of it's kind of pre-allocated to streets and I think we also have some sinkholes that need to be taken care of.
Exactly.
So, I know that what, what's in it is not what we really have, because we've got still tremendous problems with that.
And if I ask Albert, the accountant, to make a ordinance that dispenses that money the way it's supposed to be.
Okay. Because we haven't had any real accounting or, I'm sure it's being accounted of, but we haven't seen true accountability, you know, like the runs that we get every month.
Right.
And we need to see that, what each one of those bonds and, and are, and what each one of the open capital projects have left in them.
Correct.
Okay, so that's all I wanted to ask, if I could, please, thank you.
All right.
He does send you a balance sheet. I emailed you guys a balance?
Yeah, I had a balance sheet.
Okay.
But I don't have an updated, new 2,000.
Right.
Which one's a lot?
1231, 2013, updated balance sheet.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor? I'm sorry, Councilman Bodie?
No discussion.
Councilman Chellian?
No discussion.
Councilman Landry?
No discussion.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed, five yeas, no nays. Madam Clerk, second ordinance?
All right. And I hope we get some more money. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Landry and seconded by Councilman, who would like to second this one, or the? An ordinance to sell property owned by the city of Harahan, providing for the procedure to be utilized pursuant to the provisions of LRS 334712 at sequins, which provides for the sale, exchange, or lease of property by a municipality. Whereas the property is no longer needed for public purposes and the city of Harahan is authorized to sell the property described as the lot facing Hickory Avenue. The subject site is a lot formed on what originally was a continuation of the right-of-way of 7th Street, which could have been connected to Dickory Avenue but was never completed. Because of this, there is no legal description, tax information, or history of the subject property as a municipal entity. This appraisal makes the extraordinary assumption that the dedicated street can be sold privately, based upon our physical inspection of the site as well as the legal descriptions of the sites that abut the subject on the north and south. The site dimensions are assumed to be 40-foot frontage on Hickory Street by a depth of 120 feet between equal and parallel lines. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the city of Harahan, state of Louisiana, acting as the governing authority of said city, that the mayor of the city of Harahan is above commission to dispose of city property described as a lot facing Hickory Avenue by sale, which said property is no longer needed for public purposes under the provisions of LRS 334712 at sequins. The sale shall be for not less than the appraised value of $48,000. The mayor of the city of Harahan shall sell the property for the appraised value of $48,000. All ordinances or parts of ordinances of the city of Harahan in conflict with this ordinance and all sections in the Harahan Municipal Code in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. If any section, subsection, paragraph, sentence, clause, phrase, or other part of this ordinance may be found to be unconstitutional by a valid judgment of decree of any court of competent jurisdiction or if unenforceable for any reason, such unconstitutionally shall not affect the validity of any of the remaining sections, subsections, paragraphs, sentences, clauses, phrases, or other parts of this ordinance, which shall continue in full force and effect. The severability and repeal clause is referenced in ordinance number 1566 is incorporated into this ordinance. This ordinance having been considered section by section and as a whole, a vote was taken and the vote was as follows.
Mayor, may I? I'm sorry, before you, I spoke with the clerk, we're going to have to amend one part of the initial part of the ordinance, where we have, this appraisal makes the extraordinary assumption. Just for y'all, for your information, an appraisal was done, this property does not have a legal lot description, but appraisal was done and the language was put into this ordinance, but I don't, I don't think we need to put it in there, we talked about it. But we'll take out this appraisal, if you guys want to. This appraisal makes the extraordinary assumption that the dedicated street can be sold privately. I would ask that y'all amend and take out that sentence. The next sentence would be based upon the, instead of our, the physical inspection, because we did have that performed. And in the next sentence, the sites that abut, and just, it's just a U in there, abut the subject on north and south. That's it?
All right, motion by Landry, to amend, second by Bodie. Language is set for it by the city attorney. All in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed, five yeas, no nays. Madam Clerk, can you get with him to get that straight?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Council.
So, do we vote on it yet?
No.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed, five yeas, no nays.
Anybody want to?
I'm sorry, any discussion?
No.
No.
All right, now votes.
We open it up for public hearing? We didn't do anything with that, huh? Anybody want to say anything about this? You're welcome.
We got to vote again.
So, motion by Bodie, second by Landry, to close the public hearing with the amended language, all in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed, five yeas, no nays. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance number one for introduction. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman, this is for the franchise fees. Bodie?
Yeah.
Too late.
An ordinance setting the Cox Cable franchise fee to be paid by those entities providing cable or video service within the city's municipal limits and under a state-granted franchise authority and otherwise providing with respect thereto. And ordinance number two, the following ordinance was proposed by Councilman, who wants it?
Murray.
In ordinance setting the Bell South Telecommunications LLC AT&amp;T franchise fee to be paid by those entities providing video service within the city's municipal limits under a state-granted franchise authority and otherwise providing with respect thereto.
Oh, business? New business official journal? We had two bids, one from the Times Picard and one from the New Orleans Advocate. New Orleans Advocate had the lowest bid by almost 10 cents per column inch.
Nine to 11 cents.
Is there a motion to use the Advocate?
Make a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Shadling, second by Landry, all in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed, five days, no days. New Orleans Advocate wins this bid.
A gentleman here from the Advocate, Mayor?
Huh?
There's a gentleman here from the Advocate?
Yes.
He is? Who's that?
I see the little tag on you.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I'd like to introduce you to Mr. Dan Shea, who is the Chief Operating Officer, and a whole bunch of other titles for the New Orleans Advocate, who's here tonight if there's any questions for the Advocate, and he's here to answer anything you need.
Step up, sir. Ask you who your barber is, too. Thank you for bidding on this. We appreciate the service you offer, wants anything?
You know, the legislature recently made a law change to allow the New Orleans Advocate to compete for this business, and they were looking for two things. They wanted to introduce another layer of competition in New Orleans, and that's worked out for you. We offered a price, I think it's twelve percent cheaper. I'm not good at math, as I've been told at the Kenner Official Journal, so we offer you a cheaper rate. And the more important thing, and I think your clerk would appreciate this, is that seven-day-a-week print publication, where we're willing to put your ad in on a thirty-six-hour basis, makes the wheels of government go smoother in Harahan. If you need an emergency meeting, if you need an emergency bid, if there's a storm threatening and you need to add some piece of equipment, we're gonna get your ad in right away, so you can meet state law, and we're gonna offer extremely good service. This is Sarah Bernard, who is our Vice President of Advertising and Marketing. She was with the Times Picayn like I was for a number of years, laid off by them when they stopped having a seven-day publication. And we are committed to providing that excellent service. We're very proud to be part of the New Orleans area, and we're working hard to, when you trust Harahan is a good city for us, we have a lot of subscribers. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to plug real quick, I just started subscribing to the Advocate recently, and when the competitions stopped having daily papers, I just stopped reading it. But I've started getting it last month, and I realized how much I missed it. It's really nice having a paper every morning. So I thank you for doing it, and I think a lot of, a lot of people do.
Thank you, sir. I'm Jefferson Russel, and we'll work at heart.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next Colonial Club update, we already got that from Mr. Capella. Three, high-content Carreras Grill, chief, everything's all right with that? Motion by Landry, second by Shadling to approve it, all in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed, five days, no days?
Welcome, Carreras.
Anyone wishing to address the council, or come to do so?
Can't wait for them to come.
Get somebody to try the mic, somebody gotta come up here and do something.
Come on.
No. Mr. Will Lasso, my one, gonna say a few things? What are you even doing? You getting our check, what do you do for it?
Okay, well, we can, I just give you a little thirty-second intro and be happy to answer questions. But at the last meeting, we took all the comments regarding the Colonial Agreement. We put it into a document, tracking everything we heard at that meeting. Mr. Corcel sent me some of his notes, and we've talked to Mr. Capella and the developer a couple of times during the month, and are gathering his notes, and we're continuing to do that. And I think our goal is to present something to you after we work with Mr. Corcel at the next council meeting. So that's where we are this morning.
Mayor?
Yes, I'm sure.
Mayor.
Counselor.
I just got it, I think, on Monday, Tuesday, and I've gone through three pages, and I have numerous questions, corrections, so forth.
That's great, that's exactly what we want.
Okay, so I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna hand this, well, when I'm finished, I will give this to you and copy. I'll just email this over to you, and so that y'all can get it and take a look at it and see. My main, my main thing I keep wanting to reiterate, though, is we keep talking about fifteen acres in the front with C one, and then forty acres in the back. We talk, this is an eighty-nine, almost ninety-acre lot, and we are missing thirty-four acres. You've got to come up with something to do with that, because the forty and the thirty-four acres is R one. It is still one lot. It is, am I correct? Because there was, the only change that was made out of that entire eighty-nine acres was fifteen of it came out for C one. So the rest of it has to be treated as, my understanding, as one lot, not forty acres out of that remaining area, which is actually seventy-four.
We will work with Mrs. Charley and make sure we refer to the legal lots, but I think also we will defer to the developer and the owners and their description of their intents on the, of the other pieces.
Well, you can do it for phases, phase one, phase two, or whatever, projected phase.
And they're giving us that input at the same time.
But we have to completely show that there is an entire amount, not, if not, it's worthless, because it doesn't have the entire amount. So I think that that's the first thing that needs to be addressed, along with a complete public record description of the property itself, both Lot One, which is the C one now, or whatever that number is, and then the remaining lot with everything else in it. Because although he said he wanted to keep X amount in the back for, Mr. George's wanted to keep X amount in the back, he did not ask at the time of this for that to be separated and to make other lots for it. So the rest is an entire piece.
Yeah, we will definitely.
I can't reiterate that enough.
We will put an appendix of the current situation, and if the property owners want to come and ask you for a re-subdivision in the future, then it'll be handled in a normal course.
Sure.
But it won't be, it won't be a condition of this development agreement at all.
Right, and that's not a problem.
Right.
But the problem is, is this agreement is not a whole. You're only putting pieces of it in it, by not engulfing the entire total tract of land. Of, it's eighty-nine point nine something acres, if I remember correctly. So we always rounded it out to ninety, so you have to show it in here.
And we're gonna compile all the comments from everybody.
Just for my own information, when you do something like that, the property's three tracks. So we cut off fifteen, and we make it C one. The other ones remain in the other tracks? Did they, did they do without the other fifteen acres?
Right, well, a subdivision was put forth to create that lot in the front.
Right.
And that lot was rezoned C one.
But that was part of two tracks. I mean, the way it was.
But it was re-subdivided into a single track, and it was legally described as a new track that is now zoned C one. Everything that was left behind stays with their new old boundaries.
The new old boundary, just with the top cut off?
Exactly. With the current, with whatever the zoning is today, because we didn't change the zoning on anything else.
Although a tract is merely a, it is, it's not a legal term, and we discussed that in some length.
Yes, it is, and we have discussed that four or five times at these meetings.
Right.
You're right.
But yet, but yet, we don't, but there is no legal, there's a description just saying a tract of land between point A and point B, but the legal description of the property, I know it has tract in it, but the legal description of property right now is all the rest of the acreage is still one, whether it's in tracts or not.
No, I'll go to Mr. Charley, and we will use the legal description of the existing lots as per the City of Harahan's approval of those existing lots.
And if we may have.
And people normally call those tracks. So they will be legal lots of record that will be referred to in the agreement.
Okay, perfect, and I'll give you these, I'll give you my.
Councilman, make sure, can you copy us on that?
I would love to do that. I had planned on it anyway.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, it helps a lot, 'cause people ask questions.
All right, thank you. Mayor Ferrera?
You know, I have an answer for him. I have an answer for him.
Can you tell about, can you talk to everyone about the second most important thing in Harahan? Cut through.
Colonial Country Club's most important, and the closure of Hickory Street is the second most important. And I know a lot of people would like to hear about that, and the mayor asked me to give an update on that project. The closest date that we can get for the opening of Hickory Street be end of July. May run into June with bad weather, but July, they're shooting for July. On a different note, Ninth Street is gonna be closed. Everybody that uses Ninth Street to go across won't be able to do that anymore. The Corps of Engineers called the mayor and gave the mayor the new detour route, which is Camden Street, which is by Zarang Park. You gotta go all through the industrial area back there, fight all the traffic for FedEx, and go all the way to Edwards Avenue to get out of there. When the mayor heard that, once again, he considered the citizens more important than the Corps of Engineers, so he asked that we look to see if we can open another street. His idea was to open a street by a new name, Eleventh Street. Eleventh Street is directly on the other side of the Lions Club. So we have Tenth Street already open that y'all are using, and the mayor had it blacktopped. We're gonna reverse that flow. Instead of coming into Harahan on that street, you're gonna exit Harahan on that street. Get right to Dickory, and you can shoot right out. You don't have to go all the way through the FedEx traffic and all other trailer trucks and everything over there. Eleventh Street will be right on the other side of, the north side, of the Lions Club. You will come in that way and hit Hickory Street and going on about your business. So that is what's gonna be in place. Once again, the city paid to blacktop Tenth Street. The mayor felt like somebody else should pay, and he worked with Councilman Johnston, Councilman LaGasse, Parish President John Young, and also we had heard that the Corps may pay for, for part of it. I wanna let you know, the City of Harahan's not gonna pay for it. That street's gonna cost almost thirteen thousand dollars to do. The City of Harahan's not gonna do it. We don't have it etched in stone yet, who's gonna pay for it, but we've been assured that the City of Harahan will not pay for it. My best guess on that will be, we'll probably have that in progress in about two weeks and have that open. We already started some work on moving some equipment out the way. We had some other material, we had stockpiled at the end of that street. That's all out the way. I'm actually really waiting for the engineers to come tell me how they're gonna direct traffic once the traffic gets on Dickory Street, or where it's leaving Dickory Street. So that's about the synopsis of it now. Anybody has any questions? None? Good, thank you.
This new street, we're also gonna asphalt, and I term it, because of Elton LaGasse and Councilman Paul Johnston, I term it Elton John dash stun street. Thank you.
Mayor. Mayor Carlo. I just, I just have this to say.
ELJ?
About this street, is that the Corps has put us in this predicament because of us needing it. However.
Also, they screwed up.
Exactly. That's a best, that's a good way to say that. But my biggest problem is that we had to make them do something and allow us to do what we needed to do for a police and a fire standpoint, for the health, safety, and welfare of our citizens, because they wanted to reroute us to the east and west end and back, just to get across to the Generous Part, which is literally a stone's throw away, and a baseball could go that far away, somebody can throw it. And to me, I am, I am livid for the fact that Harahan has to pay, and whoever else will pay for it, that why, because of their ill-conceived notions, and their mess-ups, that we are having to pay, and our citizens are having to pay, number one, by their inconvenience, and us having to pay for the inconvenience of having to make do with something that they should have done in the first place. And, you know, complaining to the Corps of Engineers, I may as well be talking to the wall. And we all know that, we're all been aware of that, although they've done some nice things for us, you know, and tried to help out, the general consensus is, we should not have had to pay for this. In the contract somewhere along the way, Mayor, you're a lawyer, I mean, is there something where we can find in there that they are liable to make sure that the health, safety, and welfare of our citizens are taken care of? 'Cause they were gonna literally reroute us and take an extra three minutes for, I think, just the fire department to be able to go back around to Hickory Street.
Well, they did address that problem. At no time was the service of the citizens of Harahan jeopardized.
At no time did that happen, because of, because of our, because of.
No, no, I'm not talking about the opening of the street. The Corps did build a little temporary street in front of the VFW, only to be used by emergency vehicles.
I'm aware of that.
Fullers, pi, and ambulance service, only, only for that.
But only after sincere negotiations via you and, and the mayor and two other people.
Yeah, we were out there, the mayor and I were out there, and we looked at it, and they agreed to put that street in there.
Right, but it just annoys me to know in that
Well, it also annoys.
That we're having to pay for their errors.
It also annoys the mayor, he, you know, he feels the same way that you feel, and like most of the councilmen feel. But being a lawyer, he says, let's put it in, let's do this for the convenience of the citizens of Harahan, we'll fight the battle of the eight thousand dollars to, for Tenth Street at a later date.
Well.
So now, whomever's gonna pay for Eleventh Street, then, will, if they wanna fight the battle, that's fine. We looking forward to getting the blacktop street as soon as we can and put it in.
Right, but anyway, I just wanted to make that known, that y'all have fought for it, and if we hadn't have gotten in, the inconvenience of just our citizens.
It's a mile and a half out the way.
Yeah, right, it is.
But, but we are getting a pump to the river.
But listen.
Let's not fail, remember that, we're getting a pump to the river. Okay, it's a little inconvenience, but homes aren't gonna fly.
Hey, but the point being is that we're having to put out our money because of that.
Well, right now, the only thing we're putting out is eight thousand dollars, a lot of money, but
Right now, we don't, eight thousand dollars is a lot of money.
The mayor is gonna try to recoup that money, that funding.
Let's wait till the end, when the project's finished, and then we could fight to see what else is messed up. I mean, they still got a lot of work to do.
Yes, they do.
Tight, tight area.
Yes, they do, and there is a lot of work to do, and hopefully that the engineers and everybody who's worked on that project will, we will see results from it. I'm praying that we, as, as the citizens of Harahan, will see some results from it.
And just like everybody, we're gonna benefit from the pump to the river. If we get this whole pump to the river and the City of Harahan pays eight thousand dollars, I think we did a good job.
Absolutely, understand.
Pretty good.
But in the meantime, it's aggravating.
Mayor, what about the closing of River Road?
It's more than that.
Okay, on a sad note, River Road's gonna be closed in about thirty days, and it's gonna be closed for fifteen months. Yep. Fifteen months.
Did you get an update yesterday, that it's not gonna be for thirty days? They got a delay, they backing it up?
No, nobody told me that.
Check with Ms. Melinda.
On the River Road?
She told me yesterday that she got a phone call, and they supposed to send it an email, it's gonna be backed up more than.
No, that's the same one I think you got.
I'm sorry?
I think it's the same one you got.
I, I just, I gotta.
Oh, she got it a day late.
So it is gonna be delayed, or it's not gonna be delayed?
Oh, it's definitely gonna be delayed.
Okay.
It's gonna be delayed.
Fifteen to eighteen months, I heard.
No, 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 the start of it, though.
The closure, I heard the closure's gonna be delayed.
My latest information was that in thirty days, they were gonna close it, within thirty days.
What happens when Jefferson Highway gets?
It's gonna be.
I'm sorry, what?
Single lane.
It's gonna, Jefferson Highway's gonna wind up at some point also being closed, or areas.
Yeah, and I guess, once they open the River Road, you have to realize, they have four different contractors working on this pipeline. One's starting at the Soniat Canal, coming towards the plant, the other one's starting at the river going back that way. Hopefully it don't wind up like the Uppin Long Bridge with the little.
Are they gonna meet, that's what's my thought, are they gonna meet up straight together, are they gonna do this?
So let's, let's hope they don't close River Road, Jefferson Highway.
And Hickory.
And Hickory, at the same time.
They can't.
We had to go, yeah, we had to go up Williams.
And just so you'll know, a lot of people ask, a lot of people ask me this question for anybody's information. You saw the size of the pipes that's gonna go to the Mississippi River?
Unbelievable.
Three seventy-one-inch pipes, three of them, seventy-one inches.
Don't put a lot of water.
All right. They are not gonna go over the top of the levee. They have built another levee behind that levee to retain the batch of water and all. They are gonna tear the levee down, as you know it, with the bike track and all. The pipes are gonna go there, and then they'll build a levee back over that. Then the water will, or the pipes pumping the water will go over the other levee to the river. So they just couldn't put those three big pipes over the top of the levee. And that's the first time, all I've been doing this, ever heard that anybody's letting the levee be penetrated with anything.
Yeah, that's, that's a.
At what time of year they gonna do this?
Well, I'm always worried about that also.
Probably April, when it's.
When the river rises.
The river's gonna rise.
Right, it's smacking. You need to do it.
Maybe the pump to the river won't, won't need to fall.
It will all be washed away.
Anything else, Councilman Johnson? Come on, Councilman.
Come on, come on, get a new mic.
Come on, man.
Use the new mic.
Come on.
Email from the Corps. We just received notice that River Road will be closed by the Corps of Engineers, contracted from July seventh until approximately October twenty-seventh, twenty fourteen. We are preparing to standard road closure notice for this. We have also been just notified that the inspectors, inspection road bike path will be closed from July seventh, twenty fourteen, until the completion of the project, approximately December twenty-first, twenty fifteen. No road closure will be issued, however, because of, it's a bike path.
So that's a target date now?
So you're looking at from July seventh through October twenty-seventh, River Road's gonna be closed.
And the end of two thousand fifteen is the estimated completion date of the entire project?
That's what they say, and.
That'd be fantastic.
With that portion, it's gonna be twenty sixteen, I hope. Twenty sixteen. This is 2015, they're going to have to... The bike path. All right, let me see what else. Okay. It's, River Road's going to be closed from July, July, August, September, October, going to be closed four months.
Four months.
River Road. The bike path's going to be closed from July 7 until December 21 of 2015, so that's a year and a half.
It's going to be from Hickory to Powellon closed, or what?
It's going to be, Powellon's going to be closed.
Still be able to go down Hickory, then?
You can't go down, yeah, you can go down Hickory, but you can turn, you can turn...
You don't go down Hickory to Evans is going to be there.
That won't be too bad.
Yeah, you got to go to Evans and come down.
Yeah.
Hickory's going to be okay.
That's not going to be bad.
Also, I also received notice today that the Sealer is paying for the road. They're paying the whole enchilada.
The new road?
The new road, they're paying the whole enchilada. They're paying $15,000. I met with them and talked to them.
All right, we making it seven grand, too.
Told them inconvenience, and it's a long story, but they agreed to pay the $15,000 for the road, and I talked to the mayor already about reimbursement on the other road, so...
Thank you, sir.
All right.
All right.
Anyone else wish to address the council? Madam Clerk, what are we doing?
Secretary's report for May, revenues $411,089.5.
Got to pay bills, or...
The bills paid for May were $445,127.53.
Chief, you got a report?
Evening. Report for May 2014, number of calls for service was 672, we had 15 accidents reported, number citations issued were 155, number charges was 207, we had eight patrol requests. Total number of arrests for the month were 45, number of charges were 77, was five traffic, 12 felony, 49 misdemeanors, and 11 city charges. There were two residential burglaries in the month of May, and 13 larceny thefts and 12 assaults. Get the date. On May 25, there was a report of a simple robbery at Dollar General, and as a result of subsequent investigation, the employee at the store was booked with theft and filing a false police report, so. And there was a rumor going around that there was a simple robbery at the store, but it was not, said the employee was charged with theft and filing a false police report, so. Everything else has been pretty safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Councilman Landry?
I just have one report. I just wanted to congratulate Congressman Steve Scalisi, he's a Metairie boy and a rumble boy, got elected House Majority Whip, which is number three to the presidency, so I think that's great. I think it's 30 years since we've had a Louisiana guy in a high office in the party, so congratulations. And that's it.
Councilman Shadley?
I would like to just ask everybody to support your local businesses. I mean, we all go eat restaurants, I mean, we have some very good restaurants and stuff in Harrah, you know, we have some small businesses, I mean, we support our local businesses, they support us. That's all I could ask, is stay local if you can. I mean, some things we can't get local, so we got to go somewhere else, but try to stay local and support your local businesses. Thank you.
Councilman Bodie?
Just want to say it's hot, be careful.
Yeah, it's hot.
And, you know, kids out of school, so they're running all over the place, you know, keep your eyes open for them, and it's pretty much it. Of course, if y'all ever need us, please call us, contact us, you know, and don't just go around talking to your neighbors about it. We have a job, and I mean, that's what you pay us to do, so please call us if you need us.
Happy Fourth of July, and remember throughout the month of June, Harrah residents can put anything and everything out on the curb to be picked up by the city's garbage contractor at no cost, from heavy old couches and carpets to piles of shrubbery, everything will get picked up as part of a move to help keep Harrah clean. Now, that'll be on the second garbage pickup for your area.
Councilman Murray?
Yes, thank you very much. Mayor, I just wanted to say... Mayor, thank you very much. I just wanted to say thank you. I believe through the efforts of your staff that we are number four in cleanest city. Was that correct? I saw that?
Correct.
Okay, so congratulations to everybody who helped out with that. I think that was awesome. I do want to thank Councilman Johnson for all his help with us. I know that it's the first time in a very long time that the city has gotten such good cooperation and support from our district two councilmen, so, pardon me, somebody said, so we're still looking for more help whenever we can, you know that. But anyway, Councilman Johnson, thank you very much, we do appreciate that, we really do. I also wanted to thank, I've had the opportunity to talk a few times with our new police chief, Tim Walker, and congratulations, we look forward to it, we're all happy to be here to help you, I'm more than happy to help you in any way, shape, form I can, and just wanted to say thank you very much for all that you're doing. And it's, as I said, it's hot out there, and children are out at play, I had a couple of them the other day that were playing, all of a sudden a ball comes across the street, and, you know, you have to slam on your brakes, so just please be careful with that. Also, we'll thank you all, y'all have a very nice summer, or the rest of June, and happy Fourth of July coming up. Thank you.
Councilman Hewitt?
No report.
Thank you.
Motion by Landry and second by Hewitt to adjourn, all in favor?
Yay.
Yay.
Five days, no days.